Welcome to the Tuesday, February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five Regular City Council Meeting. Would all of you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Misty?
Smack.
Here.
Clements?
Here.
Dewater?
Here.
Morris?
Here.
Weir.
Number four is approval of the February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five agenda. I'll take a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public discussion?
Bueller?
Okay, we'll be moving on to number six, approval of the consent agenda. I'll take a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number seven, approval of the resolution calendar. Take a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Smack?
Yes.
Clements?
Yes.
Dewater?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Number eight, Resolution sixty-nine thirty, approving change order number three in the amount of twenty-two thousand, three eighty-eight fifty with Rot J construction.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Smack?
Yes.
Clements?
Yes.
Dewater?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Number nine, Resolution sixty-nine thirty-one. Sandy let me know this afternoon that it was a thousand off. It was actually should be seventy-two, four oh eight, which was a carryover. It was ten thousand, five hundred for Bolton and Mink, but it was sixty-one thousand, nine oh eight for Denver Underground. So that was a nice savings of twenty thousand to do that. That's the quick trip, quick trip portion doing the stormwater.
I mean, just amended in the resolution then?
Yeah, as amended, seventy-two thousand, four hundred and eight dollars.
I move passage of Resolution sixty-nine thirty-one with the amount amended to seventy-two thousand, four oh eight.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Smack?
Yes.
Clements?
Yes.
Dewater?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Number ten is Resolution sixty-nine thirty-two, setting date of public hearing on vacation of various easements in Eagles Landing. We have a utility easement. There used to be a utility pole, Mid-American. When we did Phase One and we put the utilities in there, they took that utility pole down and bore underneath. That used to feed Rick Rider, Eagles Lake, across the interstate. And then they bored, Mid-American boarded it, boarded across the street or bored under or whatever they did. Anyway, Quick Trip wanted us to vacate that easement and as well, we got a request from I three eighty Properties, Jim Bendah, because when they were doing their build for Pella, the original stormwater, they ended up removing. So we're going to remove that easement as well. And they put a new stormwater and so we'll put that, a new easement back on. It's just in a different location. So that all has to be done by public hearing and legalities and such and such. So that's what we're doing. Take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Smack?
Yes.
Clements?
Yes.
Dewater?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Number eleven, Resolution sixty-nine thirty-three, dedicating Outlet B of the Final Plaid of Eagles Landing subdivision first addition. Outlet B is our stormwater retention center. They just wanted, they just want to be insured. There's a lot of, I think there's just a lot of legalities Quick Trip after building all their hundreds of stores have ran into. So they just want to ensure that we indeed were going to take care of that stormwater detention, retention pond.
And this came to mind after we talked this afternoon.
Mm-hmm.
Is there anything, just again, things that we haven't run into either?
Yeah.
Is there anything in here that we should have? I mean, did legal need to take a look or?
Oh, legal did it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that it was.
Yeah, both actually ten and eleven.
Okay.
Are, is legal counsel.
Okay. Just to make sure that it's in rope right and something that we didn't miss a small little thing. Not that, we're not saying that Quick Star is not being a good neighbor, but.
Yeah.
Something that we didn't catch now could cause problems five, ten years down the road.
Right. I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Smack?
Yes.
Clements?
Yes.
Dewater?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Item number twelve is request for mayor to approve memorandum of understanding with InterCog regarding grant funding for the Angels Park Improvement Project and authorize the mayor to sign said agreement. That will be for REAP funds. Hopefully, the REAP funds will be for the retaining wall. Cause that's kind of, there's a couple of things in that project that they would, you know, that REAP, and that's through the I A Department of Natural Resources, would fit into their perimeters of their grants. But that, the retaining wall is going to be the most. Now, that isn't, that, you can't even apply until August. So we'll just have to work that out when we do quotes and stuff for that project. And InterCog actually writes that grant. I just, motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number thirteen, council to consider allocating Geo bond funds to waterworks for projects. We had, Maggie had worked with Misty and I, just, I put a piece of paper in front of you, just kind of showing you the outline of where we at, are in, in our projects. Also, if you look at the backside of that, you could see in the Lafayette project, the contingency amount that I believe that the state put in, because it is a DOT project, was two hundred ninety-three thousand, nine hundred forty-three dollars. Well, what we don't want to do is when we were doing, we initially set six point five million aside for these two projects. So what we don't want to do is, we don't want to get halfway through or three-fourths way through our projects and not have money to finish our projects. So after talking to Maggie with Spear Financial, we decided we would, in the back of our mind, we would still give them six hundred thousand. Now, they pay for that portion themselves. However, we would start out with the three hundred thousand. So until we completed these two projects, because right now, as you can see, the city actually needs three thousand, seven hundred thirty-seven dollars, three, three million, sorry, seven hundred thirty-seven dollars, four hundred and forty-seven to complete, as long as we don't have any more change orders right now. So when we only have four point, four million, four hundred and eighty-five thousand yet to bond of our initial six point five, that's what we're going to need. So it appears that we could assist them because they have several projects that they need to get going. However, we want to protect the city as well on, you know, finishing these two projects that we actually bonded for to begin with.
Otherwise, they'd be on their own to do the bond?
They don't, they can't.
So really, there's not many choices here?
No. But what I, and what I wanted to discuss with you before we talked to them about it is I wanted to get, you know, your approval that you're in favor of, of doing that anyway. We've done it a lot in the past because they can't go out for Geo bonds, but they can go through the city.
You know, I thought they, at one time, were able to bond.
No, a utility cannot do a Geo bond. So basically, we, we, meaning the waterworks, then just borrow the money from the city and pay the city back directly, not the bonding agent.
I don't know why I thought that. I guess maybe it was back in the water tower days.
Nope.
And maybe we just combined them other than doing two separate.
Every time in the last thirty years, which is what I'm familiar with, when the waterworks has borrowed money, it was at a time when the city was also borrowing money for an ambulance or a project or something. So, and when we did it that way, we would split the fees, the upfront fees, the bonding attorney fees and that, which can get quite expensive. But that way, we shared those costs because we did it at the same time that the city was getting money for the city.
Mayor, does any of the bond play into what relief could come for any potential increases or anything off the waterworks? Do we know or?
A little bit, but not much.
Okay, I didn't know if that would.
I mean, right now, they said they could utilize seven hundred thousand just to do this one main project they need to do. That doesn't count all the other things they've been looking at. And they are looking for, you know, they, they are going to do applications for grants, et cetera, for some of the stuff that they, they need to do.
And so you think six hundred thousand is the max we'd want to?
Yeah.
Consider.
Yep. But, you know, if we didn't have, you know, we finished these projects and we don't have any more change orders. I'm saying that sarcastically, because we already have five on Eagles Landing. You know, maybe we would have more that we could do. That's why I'm saying, let's just do three hundred right now. And then, you know, when these projects are complete, and they may be more ready for it at that time too, because they have to do engineering and all that kind of stuff.
Realistically, what kind of timeframe do they think they're going to complete this stuff in?
Well, they, I mean, there's, they have a bunch of stuff in a five-year plan. So, and these funds have to be used within two years. So we wouldn't even want to give them the funds until they are ready to move forward. It's real common. I mean, we've done it. The two thousand and fifteen Geo bond that we did, the twenty-six Geo bond we did, the twenty-seventeen Geo bond we did, and the two thousand and twenty, wasn't it? Or not? No.
There was one further back because one just got paid off like last year.
Yeah, it was. Yep. The two thousand and sixteen, I think. So, I mean, this is commonplace. I mean, we've done this quite frequently throughout the years.
If the city's in a position to be able to help this problem, that we should, it's just a matter of how much and, you know, is it going to bite us in the, in the end as far as shortchanging ourselves?
Right.
For our projects. Not to say that, you know, the city's water isn't partly our project, but, you know, just because it's our city. Yeah, it's just hard to decide. And as you said, as long as things go well with the other projects.
Yeah, and again, like I said, we would just do the three hundred thousand to begin with and.
Yeah, it's not like this is the Elk Run Water Works are helping out here.
No.
Right.
Right.
I, I get it. It's, it's important and, you know, it wouldn't make sense to just make them squirm because that's making all of us squirm, basically. Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of helping where we can. Big picture, you know, we've all, all are obviously more than aware of, of the, the struggles and the frustrations and things that's really been happening over the last year visibly, I mean, publicly facing. So the one thing that I'd say is probably pretty consistent across any of us is we were kind of put in as a city to handle it, fix it, do whatever. Now, some of it was just simply, which, again, before I dug into it, wasn't aware that the waterworks, how it worked and established. So of course, I live in the city. It's the city's problem, no matter what it is. But also trying to be good stewards to our community. They did look to the city to say, hey, okay, fine, it's not your problem, but can you help? It's still the city. Well, here's an opportunity where we didn't have one previously to help. So, yeah, is it, is it the best thing that we'd love to be able to do with the money and things, you know? You know, debatable, because it is a needed project, but are there other projects? There always are.
Yeah.
But one that we know, and arguably so, probably the greatest concern facing the city right now is not Lafayette Road. As much as I know I'll probably get a little hate on that. We're doing Lafayette. It's not getting canceled. Don't, don't, don't cancel me. But compared to a road that isn't great to drive down versus water that, you know, needs to be safe and clean to drink, I guess I'd argue that there's not much, pretty easy direction as far as there. So where I'm going with this is our citizens have said, help and do whatever and let's get it fixed. Well, here's our opportunity to do such without putting the taxpayers out, without raising taxes, without putting the burden back on our citizens. So it's something we can financially use with an existing bond that came back well-priced.
Yeah. Yep.
Well, I agree. It's a matter of placing priorities and having drinking water is pretty high at the top of the list. So there isn't any other project that we're even remotely considering that would surpass that in importance and necessity. And this is one of the, probably the least expensive ways for a utility to borrow money is through a city, through a Geo bond as far as interest rates go. Yeah, they could walk out and go to the bank and borrow money, but they'll be paying more, which means our citizens are paying more. So bottom line, we're, we're still all trying to do what's best for the citizens.
Yeah, and this isn't anything, you haven't said anything new, so.
Right. Yeah, absolutely.
Do we need to set that amount today or?
Um, I would just like to, yeah, that'd be great. Let's take a motion to ultimately six hundred thousand, but for now, we're going to start out with three hundred thousand.
So are you saying we're promising six hundred ultimately?
Well, okay, let's not say that.
Promising three hundred.
We're promising three hundred with the possibility of six hundred.
I would, I would move funding three hundred thousand to the waterworks from the Geo bond. And then just clarification, because I will second the motion. So Adam, to clarify, three hundred thousand, quote-unquote, today, with the possibility pending completion of the city's projects.
That's correct.
Of up to an additional three hundred thousand.
Yes.
Of remaining funds.
Yes.
I would second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent. Sure, they'll be happy to know that. Fourteen, council to consider Elk Run Creek Levy Trail Project. This kind of just went to the wayside. When we originally, back in twenty-two, I believe it was, it was a TAP grant through InterCog, through MPO. And we had received two hundred ninety-five thousand for that project. I think we had asked for quite a bit more. So we were a little bit disappointed. That's all we got. Waterloo got a pretty nice share too. Anyway, the project was for four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and ten, excuse me. We are going to receive in funding that's still there and it's still available if we wanted to, if we did actually want to do the project. This is a trail from West Gilbert to Lafayette. So it just kind of connects all of our trails together and gives people from like West Gilbert an opportunity to go north on that trail system. We thought about it for the schools, you know, we thought about it, you know, for people utilizing the dog park. You know, it's a way for them to get back and forth without even using the, you know, the street, the highway or whatever.
But, you know, it's already a trail.
Yeah, it is. It is just a, just a grass trail.
It's usable. People use it all the time.
Yeah. Well, and I didn't know there's another funding opportunity coming up with TAP funds. So when I went to the meeting on Thursday, we talked about it a little bit. I don't know what the timeline is though, and I could find that out. And so what our portion as a city, now this is from twenty-two, mind you, would be a hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred. Now, that being said, all's I'm asking is, do you want me to look into it further? Or is it something that you're just not interested in doing?
From my perspective, no, I wouldn't say.
Okay.
I mean, I kind of like it being rustic. You can ride your bike on it. One of the advantages I found is that I cross-country ski up there. And if I ski on the trail that's paved, it's hard to use my poles because they have spikes on them. But you have an unpaved trail, it's pretty slick. But.
I guess I would never thought of that.
Yeah, well.
I haven't either.
So I'm not suggesting that we not pave it just for me, but.
Yeah, see, that's when it's cold. Like, I'm not going to play outside right now, so.
Yeah, I'm all nuts.
I guess I would, go ahead, Sandy. Because I'm going to counter Dick's point. I've actually had a few people in the community, even just over last summer and things, just really put an emphasis on the trail system and Lafayette being one of the key ones. And that was one of the driving points that when Lafayette was constructed, we put plans. I, I will absolutely bear some of that blame that I said, hey, I know we got to make an update. We got engineering fees because I would like to look at a true trail, proper crosswalks and things that has got to go in. So with that investment, I do see a lot of people, and it's different, different reasons, different pieces, because the trail system, if you head south, you're connected in with the Cedar Valley Bridge and things over the river, and you head south to Gilbertville on that trail system. If you come back north to Gilbert, you're directed basically just west. You do have a little bit of east, but then you kind of lose it just to a sidewalk. And legally, bikes aren't supposed to be on sidewalks. So we kind of end up with that, okay, now we're supposed to be on the road or whatnot. So given the way to get to the dog park, given the way to connect into Elk Run, or even just run it down to Waterloo, that would be another avenue, because otherwise, the technical only other spot that is a bike trail, again, there are sidewalks, but a true bike trail.
Right.
Is all the way west of town along the dike again, down the Cedar River. So I, I would like to at least see what the pricing is. You know, as we were talking earlier, we were thinking it was around maybe forty thousand of city cost. I, I would entertain that personally. It's like, okay, forty thousand with a two hundred and ninety-five or three hundred thousand project, I think that would be worth looking into. Flip side, a hundred and thirty-two thousand. Now, my brakes got to go up a little bit of going, I would love to see it done, but that, that's a little bit bigger investment just for a trail project. Could we use a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand elsewhere? So that's kind of where I was breaking. But again, in twenty-two, our road was six point five million, came back at five. So, okay. Is it worth at least maybe seeing, is it a little more reasonable now? So the only other piece, and I will throw this out there just because people, again, had contacted me for the council, was there was concern, they liked it, left his grass as well because of dogs and their animals and the asphalt gets hot. The only thing I would think though is for that, we're not paving the whole dike or even way down on it. So there should be still enough that you could walk them off to the side without having them be down the hill. So that was, was a reason brought up that was valid, but just thinking about it, I would think again how we would pave it. There'd still be enough grass there. But it would be a combination of a smoother ride for bikes and stuff. I will say, just with little kids, pushing them along, they can go, but they're not going to go the whole distance from Lafayette to Gilbert on their bikes, off-road basically. An adult may, you know, that's easier. But when I had my littles or pulling a bike trailer, yeah, I wasn't pulling it on the grass.
Well, signage would help too. I mean, no one even knows, well, some people know. But if you didn't know, that you could just take that over to the dog park or bunker park, you might not ever put it together. So we could start with signage. How many people use it anyway?
You see?
I think more so the people that live around it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, just because it's not a paved trail.
Sliders.
Yeah, people that aren't supposed to be on it.
Tobogganers.
Yeah, I was on it this weekend.
You haven't heard any, any negative things from the neighbors?
Not with a snowmobile anyway.
No. No snowmobiles.
We were sledding out.
ATVs were, but not this week.
You were, really?
Yeah.
Oh, geez, so cold.
Well, I agree with a lot of what Justin said, and I, I think there are young families that would be pushing strollers, for example, and it's much easier to do that on a hard surface than it is a grassy area.
It's a little more centrally located too, as opposed to the nature trail.
And it would make a nice exercise opportunity for all the citizens that live on the eastern half of the city. So like from Casper Heights in Michigan and, and that area, it would add a quality of life feature to that part of our town.
Yeah, because it's grand to McCoy. That, that's your next connecting. So there's nothing in between. I mean, there is, but you're wandering through my backyard, the woods, the creek, probably have a bunch of people looking at you sideways and why are you in my backyard?
I would like to at least see what today's prices would be and go from there.
And if we could get additional funding.
Yeah.
That was my other thought. Because that's what they said to me. They says, well, you know, there's, you can apply it. You can apply now for this other.
Just, just.
Please.
I'd be more receptive if we didn't have to pay a hundred and some thousand dollars.
Yeah.
I, I, I agree with Dick. I, as much as I would love it, I would, well, here, I'll be perfectly blunt. If we, if that, if we have a hundred and thirty thousand dollars that we need to put in, funding or not, to Parks and Rec, we need to be putting in restrooms. So I would much rather see that money go to restrooms because I think that would have a greater impact across the board at our parks. But if we have a bunch of funding and now we're, you know, ten percent or something of it, I'd be more to this because forty thousand buys a restroom while it may be able to pave an entire trail.
Chris, would you mind coming up to the podium and talking in regards to this? Because I know that you were.
One of the benefits that we would see is during the flooding, because we had to set a pump there.
And you said it's, it's really, it's, it's really bad. Like you had an issue with your truck.
Yeah, we slid, yeah, we slid off the road because we had to go down on the tow and then we tore it up and then got dinged by the Army Corps of Engineers. Then we had to go in there and repair a bunch of it. But we have no choice. We got to go down in there and put fuel, you know, fuel the pump and check on it regularly.
But on the flip side of that, you've been talking to me and, you know, you're like, we really need to at least do an overlay on our trail system we have now existing. Would it be better money spent if we start building towards doing that?
Around, uh.
Myers Lake.
Myers Lake.
Is, is really starting to get really bad.
Yeah.
And we've cracked sealed it, I think, twice. But we really need to do something there, so.
Okay.
But the, you know, the trail that we put in on the cedar is super nice. I mean, we run it twice a week doing garbage routes.
That's all concrete, isn't it?
Yeah, that's all concrete. And we plow it. So those who are cross-country skiing, we kind of kibosh that. Because we have a lot of walkers. Even when I plowed it the other day, there was a lot of footprints, so.
Really?
Yeah.
Too cold.
Well, when it's, you know, in the thirties or forties, I can get out a little bit. Because I, I go stir crazy now. You know, by being close to Mayor's Park, I'm able to sneak and just walk. I walk that three, four times a week at least when the weather's decent, sixteen plus. You know, even sometimes when it was a little colder, just to get out, you know, working from home, I can get up, take thirty minutes, go for a walk, come back and at least move.
Right.
So, I mean, yeah, it's. So, I mean, yeah, it's, the the trail system more so for unexpected reasons has become more of my life than I ever thought it would be.
Right.
Just for little things like that.
Thank you, Chris.
Speaking about bike trails, is there any chance that we could get a garbage can here and there on that bike trail?
Yeah, we have quite a few of them out there.
Well, you don't have anything between East End and the highway, and you can't believe how much junk I pick up every day between pop cans, bags. Someone takes the liberty of bagging up their dog poop and leaving it set along the road. Yeah, that's continuous, that's almost.
I haven't seen any garbage cans between there, I I walk between Morell and.
Where the bike trail starts, and I go all the way to the highway.
There's one right by Central.
I was gonna say Central, the skate park. That area there, so that'd be Gilbert.
You wouldn't think so.
I don't know why.
Chris, is there one at Central?
Yeah, right at the top.
Mm-hmm, you can see it from River Forest.
We actually have twenty-eight cans up.
And we check them, now we check them uh probably once a month, but in the summer, uh we we dump them every Monday morning and every Friday morning. So. The can route.
But he's saying there's nothing from.
There's nothing from East End, when I walk and get on the trail, there's no garbage cans on.
And on the bike trail, right, John?
On the bike trail.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I don't think there is, we we can add some though.
Would be nice.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm intrigued.
Yeah. Yeah, we got two at the skate park.
The skate park.
There's two at skate park.
Yeah.
I remember skate park, but I mean, that would be it then.
To go, I mean, it isn't on the trail.
Right, right, it is on the, at the skate park.
I mean, you'd have to put posts up or something to attach them though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they don't get stolen.
Generally, people are pretty good about those, you know, I don't really get, we don't get a whole lot of vandalism to our garbage cans.
If they weren't tied down, then they disappear, that'd be a guarantee.
Yeah, somebody took it for joyride or something.
Yeah, it'd be a guarantee, if it's there, the temptation would be too great, unfortunately.
Yeah. But we can have some.
Thank you, Chris, thank you, John. So can I have a motion just to um check out our options as as uh the Alcorn Creek Levy Trail, just to see what we could do, maybe we can get more funding, maybe the cost um.
And and on the funding piece, just as far as the funding we're talking about, what was Waterloo's award for that same grant?
I can't remember.
It was over a million dollars, correct?
It was a lot.
So just to kinda give you a benefit of what funding was available, it wasn't like, you know, three hundred thousand was, yes, it was a lot, but in the grand scheme of things, I read through that whole grant and where all the rewards were, we were a small fish. Um so I would love to be able to see further investment as well um in the other communities, so.
And we have everything put together, I mean, just takes some tweaking. But I mean, we pretty much have everything to get together that, I mean, cause that's due next Friday.
But not, we don't have the engineering ready, do we?
Yeah, we have the preliminary plans.
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause we were ready to go until, and I wanna say what killed it
Is that?
was the twenty-twenty-two pricing.
Yeah.
Was, you know, it was gonna be darn near half a million dollars, and it's like, oh, okay, you know, hang on. I I love the concept, but maybe we're a little further away than we'd like.
Yeah.
But and then and then have the opportunity to check and see how that would work with, you know, if we were to apply again, cause we can. Um, how would that look like? Could we combine them and utilize them? You know, both from twenty-two to twenty-five.
Like there'd be a lot of advantages to having a a project show already, essentially.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
I guess I'd make the motion just to continue or revisit the research into it for pricing, additional funding and stuff, I'd like to at least see. You know, yeah, if we can't get maybe a better bid and and whatnot on it, so.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent, um ordinance seven oh five approving changes to park regulation uh regulations in its first reading. Just a brief um history, uh a lot of parks are going to this. Um, you know, just so people aren't utilizing tent camping for their summer homes.
Or just homes, homes.
Yeah.
And this is taking place, um while I cannot formally comment on my other duties. Um, this also did add to emergency services as well down there. Because not only just from things that they couldn't control, like heat, where we were called down, cause that was the only place they could go. Um, there were also others living down in there, dogs down in there, I mean, just it added to a host of other issues. Um, at least of what my involvement with it was, so.
I'll take a motion to approve the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please, Misty.
Smart.
Yes.
Clements.
Yes.
Dewater.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Okay. Like I'd said earlier, um for the, our FY twenty-six budget, there was a couple of small changes. Some of them are just, we had just a ever so slight change to the dispatch, um we got our radio uh what do you call them? Fees.
Fees?
What, yeah, what do they call the access fees, radio access fees um under the dispatch and then um the original um nine-one-one um agreement for this year, and then, you know, just there's just a slight adjustment on that, it actually went down just a hair. Um, the other one is, I uh if you go to page five, I think it was yeah, on park, um and this is, again, this is uh for, you know, we're seeking grants for this work as well, um the park was uh, I split up what the actual engineering was gonna be, cause we had thirty thousand there. And then um I had thirty uh three hundred thousand under the zero-zero-two ending in sixty-seven twenty-two for grant match, so I did split that up as well, and put them where they could be. Um, and as you could probably see on page um six, is it page six, where other capital outlay, that was reduced like substantially.
Yeah, that one went down thirty-five thousand sixty-two dollars.
Yeah, cause we just didn't have them. Excuse me. Also, um at the last budget meeting, Dick made a comment that we only need seventeen thousand four forty-four for legal fees, and I'm like, no. Um, a lot of that extra legal fees is coming from our nuisance abatements. And nuisance abatements, especially the ones um like thirty-two forty-six Gilbertville Road that go to court, and we have to prepare. And it takes our attorney's time and our attorney's present and um I I can mention other ones, but I'm I won't at this time. Um, ones that we're currently working on. Um, so I did actually do an increase to that. Um, one that I I know, as Sandy and I were going through it today on the phone, I was also supposed to increase the other equipment for ambulance, um I had ambulance there. But we're carrying over the side-by-side from this year's budget and putting it in next year's budget, so that needs to go up like fifty-five to up to fifty-five thousand, one fifty-five total. But I, there's not really a lot of other changes, I don't know if you um have any questions regarding the budget? We are um, we are staying at the same tax levy rate. Um, however, the county, um we actually, we actually have to go in and, you know, put in what our budget is and what our levy rate is. Um, what our ac- askings for tax is, our tax askings, however you wanna put that. Um, because the county has to send that out to all the citizens in Blackhawk County. However, that being said, I was explaining to Justin today that um the state decided that they were gonna add ten percent. So even if we stayed the same, I mean, we are levy rate-wise, but you know, because of valuations increasing s- ever so slightly this past year, um, it it still shows that we're increasing by twelve point four-three percent. Because the state is figuring into that for residential and commercial, an additional ten percent. Not knowing if your property is gonna go up by ten percent this year or not. So it's, I was explaining it to Justin today, it's a little disheartening, because they're doing this for transparency. Well, to me, that's not being transparent, if you're forecasting with your crystal ball, what's gonna happen um this next season when the um assessors evaluate property again. So I'm not real sure, I just wanna give you the heads up, that's what our um our citizens and our city are gonna see. It's not, it's not the truth, you know, even if we, you know, we only went up for what we asked for property tax-wise, seven thousand. So, that's nothing, that's a drop in a bucket when you're, you know, looking at a million dollar budget for um the general fund, so. I'm just wanna, I'm just giving you the heads up, cause we have to go through the process, we have to upload it in the state, even before we approve it as a council, which is not transparent either. Um, but we have to upload it in this uh state website, so the auditor's um office can pull that down and and send out these letters that will pretty much land in your mailbox on the fifteenth, between the fifteenth and twentieth of March. So then, then we will set a public hearing to approve that property tax levy. Which seems backwards to me, anyway, and then we'll set a public hearing to approve our budget. It's kind of like a long drawn-out process process that I don't believe is transparent at all.
Well, it's putting more information out there. I I absolutely agree, cause we never got thing in the mail, we didn't have to go through all the official meetings and whatnot. But unfortunately, e- even for myself, and I I'm trying to find the positive and the benefit in it, I'm confused. So the one thing that I can focus in on is what is the piece that we as a city, we as the council can control? And that's how much per one thousand dollars
Yes.
we charge a taxpayer.
Right.
Can't control what your assessed value is, I can't control what the school's gonna charge you, I can't control what the county.
Absolutely.
And that to me, and and listed on, I think even down to the, what was it, the ten, ten thousandth of a place, the exact same. So to me, it's, okay, what we're being physically responsible towards is seven dollars and ninety-seven cents per one thousand. Now, the flip side, cause we'll all get phone calls or emails about, you say you're not increasing it, but there's an increase, is because of what I got, what appeared to be a theoretical, well, if your assessed value goes up again, well, okay. I could also die tomorrow, I could win the lottery, I could flip over in a plane crash in Tor- Toronto. But, you know, I, now there's a lot of theoretical, so that's the part that's confusing to me is absolutely, put it out there so that the public knows, because a lot of them, they're not here, they don't watch recordings, whatever, they're making it available as best they can. And if you don't pay attention, well, then that's on you for not being informed, but they're trying it, so I get that. But then, all the additional pieces, to me, it did, it made it very, very muddy. When you come in, short of just, we can focus, at least what I can feel I can control is that levy rate.
Yeah.
Well, I think the state's original idea was very good to provide more information. But once you start supplying information that's not based on fact or reality, it skews it to almost a scare tactic in some people's eyes, because they don't read it all the way through always. And they don't really know what they're seeing, and if you're just looking at a number on a piece of paper, it looks like fact when it's really not all the pieces are factual. Ours is, when the rate is in there, because that's what the rate is, but those other things can be very misleading, and I think that portion of it needs to be corrected at the state end.
I agree.
I agree, and we're, we're the ones trained from the county auditor on how to interpret this, and we're all going, I don't get it. So imagine what somebody who has had no information on it's gonna see it and look at it, so I don't, I don't blame them, I don't blame them.
Well, and the county auditor said the same.
Yeah, I was like, I don't blame our, you know, standard citizen that's gonna get this financial document with all these things in it and be confused.
Because it's showing them that if they have a hundred thousand dollar house, even though they're basing that house now on a hundred and ten for the ten percent, that their taxes are gonna go up forty-six, another forty-six dollars for the year. And that's just simply not true, I mean, I and I, I don't know, I don't have a crystal ball and I don't ever claim to. Um, you know, when even when we do our budget, we do our best to see what the expenses are gonna be in this next year, you know, by past experience, by, you know, what we spent last year, you know, where we're at, what can we do better, you know? But no one has a crystal ball to know that a furnace isn't going out like it did in the library last year, you know, we do our best.
Well, I just, I'm gonna play politics for just a second. Mayor, what is our tax rate levy rate been the past four years, with this being the fourth year?
Seven point nine seven four eight eight.
So it's been the same for four years?
Yes, it has.
Through the Great Resignation, through COVID, through some of the worst inflation we've seen, at least in my lifetime, and we've stayed the same?
Yes, we have.
Okay, just, I'm gonna play the politics card for a second, just saying that I feel the council, even the previous council and then the current council here. You know what, hats off, just because there's a lot of communities and things out there that had to raise taxes, that were forced to do more. And yes, the assessed values went up, I get that, you know, that that affects it, but the fact that we were able to still stay within all that, I feel i- is is a pretty big victory in my book.
But, well, you know, Evansdale's had the lowest, one of the lowest taxes rates in the county for twenty years.
In the state.
Yeah, and you know, a few years ago, when we had the lynch mobs here all the time, no one was actually hearing that.
Right.
It's, it's low, it's not costing you that much compared to other cities.
Right.
Fell on deaf deaf ears, so.
Right.
But yeah, just low to begin with, cause again, yeah, it could be way high and we've not changed it, but that's a good point, Dick, that it's for what it is, and I feel at least where we're at, yeah, we're reasonable as far as the levy rate, and it has not moved through some, through some pretty difficult times, I mean, for everybody. And and I I think, you know, with the right mindset of trying to control what we can for taxpayers, I mean, all of ourselves included, and we all pay taxes here too, but.
Right, exactly.
You know, I I, at least my limited time in politics, I thought that was at least worth bringing up, because that was I don't know, I thought it was a darn good job. And yes, I understand, I'm one of the voting members.
And to be applauded.
The fact is that we went through and we're able to hold it through that term and potentially this one.
Yeah.
And and I don't wanna be too cynical, but I believe the state government is doing everything they can to make it difficult for small cities, and they've never, in my opinion, helped small cities.
Well, they got, I don't know if any of you've been following what's been going on on the, you know, during their budget time and their their changes and all the things that, the bills and all this stuff, but please do look, cause there's some pretty scary things out there.
Well, yeah, they're finding out that gee, we made all these tax cuts, now we have a shortfall, of course, they have reserves. But
Yeah.
You know, how was that good planning, we couldn't do that.
No.
Or hopefully we never would.
Yeah, they have, they have some things in there that could, you know, affect us, so I would highly recommend and.
Like pet licenses?
Yeah, one of them was pet license that the city went and get the revenue. Well, I guess we're not gonna have an animal control department then, cause that, it just, it's not a lot. But it helps off offset our cost.
Yeah, it's, it's the mayor, you know, you and I talked today about some other still-related items with the same thing. To me. To me. This place just truly trying to be a problem solver, so throwing politics aside. They came in, they said basically, here's the problem, and then they started throwing solutions out, but it made you ask the question back about, wait. What problem are we trying to solve? Which is valid, yeah, let's figure out, you know, figure out what the problem is and figure out a solution. But then things got so sideways of they're like, this is how you fix it, and I'm like, but that doesn't, what problem does that fix? So it was really convoluted there to where I think whoever probably proposed it, same thing, was probably, hey, I, we have a problem out here with. Cities charging way too much for pet licenses. Okay, cool, but just eliminating them is the best way? Cause again, I, the 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 party that's in control now and everything is. Smaller government, reduce fees, and I get that. I I I can understand and appreciate that concept. But I also have to appreciate to where if you're just gonna eliminate everything and then you don't get to be the one to fix it, it's a bit unfair. Like, hang on, let's get together and make sure we have a common place on how we're gonna resolve this.
Pretty easy to tear things down.
Oh, yeah, no, I agree.
Swipe of a pin.
Extremely hard to build them up.
Well, they won't, they won't, you know, it it appears that they're take, wanting to take revenues away. Um, yet they wanna put a lot more expenses on the cities too, for other things.
And cap our growth. That's the other thing that.
Yeah, and cap our growth.
Truly that we we have this new industrial park and commercial things, and I mean, we're, we're trying to be diligent and grow, cause. You're not growing, you're dying, same said true in business. If we try to keep taxes down, but costs go up. You you can't. You either need to raise taxes or you need to bring in more revenue. Well, more revenue means more area, more businesses, more homes, more whatever. Well, if you all of a sudden grow a ton and they cap how much you can see in that growth.
Right.
Well, now it's.
Yeah.
Now it's counterproductive.
Yeah.
Even if you had a low tax rate, they still capped you and said, nope, you can't charge, you know.
Right.
You grew three hundred percent, you can't take all that. Well, it's tough.
Well, I'm sure they've been getting, uh, state government has been getting a lot of feedback over the last several years from small cities. About the the pinch that they're putting some of the cities in.
Well, I hope they are. I mean.
I know it's.
We're pretty lucky.
It's a hot topic at the league's meetings, I know, anytime you go to their annual trainings.
Yeah, reach out to your legislators, please. Any questions regarding the budget? Uh, mayor council reports, um. I don't think I have anything else, but council, go ahead.
I just had one. Please join us this Saturday down at the Ambet's.
Yes.
For the annual chili supper. Starts at eleven AM till seven PM.
Do you have tickets with you?
We have some here in the office.
I was gonna say, I don't, cause I've been doing exactly this, dropping them off in bulk, so, but. Yes, City Hall has tickets. Contact any member of the Evansdale Fire Department with tickets or during business hours down at the Community Response Center. Uh, Stephanie as well, as these ladies have been so gracious to uh sell tickets for us.
Yeah.
And if it's something you need to go, cause you're not able to join us, we do to-go taters, so. Not, not that I'm saying McDonald's is bad, but our homemade chili's better.
That's a good thought.
I just had one thing.
Go ahead.
I would really like the council to explore the idea um of the sign at the CRC, the communication sign. Um, I think that is. One idea that would be very um. Um. Worth the money, because it's something that is put in and it will last for many years to come. And it's an avenue of communication that everybody would have access to, no matter their age, if they're twenty-five or fifty or seventy-five. It's just anybody driving um on Evans Road, whether they're living in that part of town. And going north to the business district or the bank or any of our uh stores or doctor's offices, whatever. Um, if you're coming from Evansdale on your way to Waterloo, again, you're. I think it hits a big percentage of our citizens and it takes a few seconds and you read a message and you have. Information at your fingertips. It isn't dependent on someone having a smartphone, cause many people in our community do not. And it doesn't depend on you having a computer or Facebook access. It's, I think, a terrific idea and I would like to have the mayor get us. Um, a current estimate on um the signage cost, whether it's for a one-sided sign or a two-sided. Um, so that we can possibly consider that dish in the current budget.
I, I thought you did.
Well, the one I did was on top of the Evansdale.
Oh, oh.
One-sided.
But the sign itself, other than being one-sided was.
Yeah.
What you were thinking?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that was for the the better resolution, which. Um, Donnie and I saw them, they actually came here and, you know, we were able to step away from it on both sides. For the resolution and the better resolution is the better sign. I think that was twenty-six thousand, but that was just a one-sided sign.
Oh. Well, I took a look at the one that you mentioned, um, the church on Laughlin. It is an impressive sign. I mean, I've driven by it a hundred times and never paid any attention to it though. But um, but after you pointed it out, I looked at it.
Yeah, I've, I've driven up and down Evans Road. Many times in the last ten days, just specifically with this thought in mind. What does a one-sided sign look like? Visually and how far away can you start to read it and really read it? Or a two-sided? And obviously you can be at a further distance and see the message on a two-sided sign. Um, but then you have a higher cost, but we don't know what that cost is. Would it be double the single-sided cost? Or maybe somewhere a little bit less? And to have it in that grassy area um is is a prime spot, I think. Along with my little idea, I don't know if you read the email, my notes on the email, but the little.
Yeah, I can tell you were fairly passionate about it.
I was retired and I was busy one day.
It it has been an idea thrown around from the fire department and the association for, I bet we're into twenty years. Just, you know, and again, technology's gotten so much better, so it obviously would be a much better sign, but it was always just one of those to do it right. There was a a decent investment. So um it has been an idea that uh certainly has been brought up as a good idea for a long time now.
Uh, probably about as long as signage at all the entry points into the city.
Yeah, that's been forever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's kinda like which one, but it would be nice.
Yeah. No, we've talked about that for.
Ever.
Twenty-some years. I think maybe Chad had put together a plan.
Yeah.
And Doug put together a plan and.
Yeah, it's just a hard pill to swallow, thinking about forty, fifty grand for a sign, you know, essentially, uh. Not saying that all your points aren't valid, it's just that's a big chunk of money for a sign. Um, so I think that's going to be looked at that by other people that way too, so. If we could get, you know, some special funds or something like that, that would help with this, you know, might, might help things, I just.
I think there was a couple of organizations that actually would commit. Maybe even upwards of ten thousand apiece.
Um, so where, where'd you get the forty? Just double what she said?
Well, uh, well, no, they were at like twenty-six for a single-sided sign. Sandy mentioned that the one at Prince apiece was somewhere north of there. Uh, in the forty range, uh, and so I'm throwing it out there.
Yeah.
And I've had a little experience with like our awning at work, I mean, that was a lot of money. Uh, that was twenty years ago. Um, so signs get expensive, especially when they dance and.
Have you got electronics on?
No, 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 we've looked into it and it's, it's ridiculous.
Yeah.
And then the programming to go with it and all that, so.
Yeah, well, it'd be interesting to know, um, what kind of maintenance or issues the churches have, if any.
Little to none.
None.
I mean, we have people that are computer savvy that do the programming, but it's not, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to put a message out.
Yeah, it's something you can do from your phone.
Yep, that's pretty sound nowadays.
Yeah.
With the LED technology and things, it isn't the cheap.
My understanding, that aspect of it has greatly improved.
Very much so.
And and the software, it's included.
And what?
The software is included.
Yeah, or dollar, I hope so.
Would there be a yearly charge for the software? It's just a one-time?
So they don't charge a maintenance, um.
Subscription.
Unlike any software company I've ever heard of.
Right.
Yeah. They said that's included, so.
So they've got updates that come, it it's included in the upfront cost.
Right.
Okay.
We sell advertising, and so we can offset the cost, sell ads on it. Ads pay for everything.
No, Justin, not in this case.
Just, just what we need is.
We have plenty of messages of our own.
Exactly, an informational sign to come up and you just start scrolling through and see little peoples or Teds or something, you know? I don't even know what I was supposed to be reading, but apparently I gotta go buy a refrigerator now.
I want a banner right across the middle.
But when, like, we do our, you know, like when we do our Evansdale Days and, which is gonna be September thirteenth. When we do our Evansdale Days, it would be nice to put the sponsors on there.
Oh, everything, I mean, just.
Yeah.
From city cleanup to recycling and document destruction day to the garage sales to. Uh, the chili supper to uh CBYSAs, um.
Sign up.
You know, sign ups, and I mean, just kinda where you already see the signs already put up and.
Water main break on Wes Gilbert, you know, whatever.
Party in the park. Oh, maybe Water Works would be willing to put something towards it.
But yeah, I mean, I I. I do absolutely think. That it would be something utilized well, as much as it, you know, might be a financial, oh, don't spend the money on it. I don't think it'll be a. Well, that was dumb. You know, I think it'll be a, oh, it's nice to have that there, you know, yeah, we get a lot of information off of it, cause I mean, I. You know, you mentioned the churches and stuff, I drive by, uh, you know, the churches stuff, especially the one off of Evans. And they always change their little quirky type of, you know, whatever it is for this and, you know, come see me, God, and all the different other pieces with it there. And I don't even think of it, you know, I'm not, just as I scan it, I read, oh, read it, okay, that was funny, you know, and just keep on driving by, so. I do think it would get a lot of traction that way, a lot of use.
Well, can we put it on the list right under the Dyke Trail?
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?